Joint meeting North Smithfield Town Council on the Halliwell Review Committee, September 8th, 2022. Madam Clerk, will you lead us with the prayer and the pledge, please?
Lord, this is my holy spirit council, all of the government's authority and responsibility.
For the reasons to the right, on the United States of America, into the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual liberty, justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Here.
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 Here. Mr. Porter, do you want to call your group to order?
The Halliwell Review Committee, roll call for this evening. Mr. Mayo? Ms. Chardier? Mr. Gerton? The Chair is here. As noted, Mr. Corvo is here. Mr. Simkins will be attending, joining us a little later.
Okay, we have open forum. It's on the agenda, so open forum pursuant to round General Law 42-46-6. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to be heard during open forum at this time?
Mr. President, just for everyone's edification, even though there's so many people clamoring to get up to the microphone, the intent of having the public comment this evening was to allow for people that have read the report to ask any questions, make any comments. One of the things that I've always been saying that the Halliwell Review Committee should be doing is just keeping our ears open, listening to resident concerns or comments. And it was, the intent was to, if there were any questions for this evening, that we would just write them down, and then hopefully our presentation will answer them, and if not, then we can certainly address them at the end of our presentation.
No, I'm always for open forum, whatever anybody wants to be heard, but... See, we do have somebody.
It's better than, better than some of our other meetings, so.
I have a better report, but I do want to make a comment. One of the very first meetings that I went to, there was some presentation given regarding, and then they were showing an overview of the picture and some initial surveying that they had done. It showed a lot of, lot of wetlands, and I just want to tell you, they don't exist. I mean, I've lived there my whole life, played there, I can attest to it through all kinds of weather and years and years, fifty years plus. Those wetlands don't exist. Now, maybe by definition of DEM and this and that, that they could be, but there's not the water. And I only mention that because it may influence what gets built and where, or we can't build here because what if that floods out every thirty years or whatever? I just want to bring it to your attention that it doesn't exist like it was presented way back when. That's it.
Mr. Van Howe, do you agree at one time, at Halliwell, there was a pond next to the baseball field? And there was a walkover on it, but since the vegetation, et cetera?
There's two ponds that were built there. I watched them build them. Sat back in Mr. Shuddy's house, bulldozers sat there for about three weeks.
But this was when, God, I had to be ten, oh, like sixty-five years ago.
That was big trees, you'd have that big field.
Yeah, not there, over.
The entrances to the road, the main road.
It was like mid, midfield.
They made two retention ponds over there.
Yeah, there's two retention ponds. Well, we, they built them, they skated them.
Well, that's what we used to do, but since they've been overgrown. When I taught science, we'd be crossing them.
The pond in the back between the VFW and the Lindys and stuff, that used to flood, so whatever, that's...
It's overgrown. But at one time, they were very visual. And there was flowing and deep gutters in back of...
They weren't very deep. You just kind of scooped up the land and pushed them up.
Well, a couple of kids got in, they were...
That was Chuck Shuddy, remember? He was the catalyst behind that. But I don't remember much of anything to do with the baseball field.
Yeah, it was right down there, because I had kids fall, they had like a handmade ridge that you could go over it. And more than once, one kid was above the knees, if they didn't stay on the path.
I don't remember that long.
And it was an area where turtles used to lay eggs, et cetera.
Could you just state your name for the record? Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. Is there anybody else that wants to be heard during open forum? Okay, Mr. Porter, I'm going to hand it over to you now.
Okay, so this evening, we are, it's our intention to kind of bring you up to speed on everything that we've been doing the past year and a half or so. You know, putting in all the time with Weston and Sampson, our further investigation since January. And we're just going to kind of go through, give an overview of where we are and where we'd like to go. So Carl, if you could go to the first slide, I'd appreciate it. So I just wanted to take a moment to review the recommendations to date that we have made to the Town Council since our inception. So back on April fifteenth, we recommended to move forward with the building assessment and land use contract with Weston and Sampson. On July twelfth, we had made a recommendation for the remaining items in the buildings to be put up for sale or auction. And you can keep, let's see. In October of twenty-fifth, we put together a RFP for testing and cost estimating of the hazardous materials. And then in December of twenty-third of last year, we made the recommendation of demolishing and abating the existing buildings, as well as the modifications to our resolution, which gave us a couple more items to take care of. And then January twenty-seventh, we recommended that we move forward with the highly conceptual plan that was provided by Weston and Sampson, which was concept number five, with the property being utilized as a multi-use community facility. And then back in June of this year, we made the recommendation to move forward with a Class One survey of the entire property, which we would work in conjunction with the Rhode Island Master Price Agreement and the Town Planner on that, because we were on, we had reached out to some companies and found that, you know, the survey of the entire property would likely be under thirty thousand dollars to do that. So then that brings us to, which would have been last week, but now this week, our recommendation that we are looking to move into master planning and engage in the, I'm just going to read from this slide, so my apologies. "We're going to engage in the request for qualifications for architectural and engineering firms to complete a master plan for the property for a multi-use community-based site that has recreational and educational components for all North Smithfield residents." So we had gone through and made that recommendation at our last meeting, and wanted to bring that to you folks tonight. So based on all of the tasks that we have had since March of last year, including the new ones that we talked about in January, we've gone through and completed a land use study with Weston and Sampson. We had that presentation back in December, where they reviewed the assessment of the buildings, and also touched on the five different concepts that they had prepared, as well as the wetlands assessment and the recommended next steps, which involve going on to master planning. There's also another portion of working with DEM to identify wetlands, where they may be or where they may not be, and move forward in that process. In the time that we've been together as well, we've been putting together, gathering a lot of community feedback. So this has happened in a number of different ways with our community survey, which we ran from May and June of last year. We had our public charrette, which we had last July, when we had the walkthrough of the Halliwell property, and then the meeting up at the middle school, where we had, I would say, a fairly good turnout, given that it was a summer charrette. And then we had a lot of interactions with individuals amongst the community at the last year's pumpkin fest. So we, in all, I think, believe we had almost upwards of a hundred and fifty different physical reactions to the concepts that were put in place by Weston and Sampson. And then also, every member of our committee has done individual outreach, whether it be with talking with neighbors, talking with individual groups, and understanding how the Halliwell property could best suit them and what they thought the town could be moving forward with. And then we went on and also went in, dug into the town needs. So we did a pretty extensive exploration of the town's comprehensive plan. So you'll find more of a write-up in that, in the report that we provided. We did look at, there has been the concern of school department projections. So we looked at those numbers, the updated numbers from the group that does all of Rhode Island's projections, understanding that the North Smithfield's projections are going to be pretty stagnant, there's not going to be any major increase or decrease. And then we also reached out to the library. The library and both seniors, the seniors advisory group, they're mentioned in the town's comprehensive plan, but there's no thorough plan for them put in place as we move forward. So we wanted to make sure that the items that were lacking in the town's comprehensive plan could also be identified as we moved forward. And then as we continued along as well, we did some grant, for grant research, understanding that a lot of the grants that we are looking at for potential funding use comes from, or does require some sort of planning, our master plan to move forward and submit for grants. We went to a number of different community center visits. So members in our committee took their own time, went to various community centers throughout the region. Those are also outlined in the report, so I think we ended up going to at least six or seven in total, understanding how their community center works, what services they provide, where their funding came from, and other similar situations to try and see if there were any lessons learned that we could understand from what they, that process that they have gone through. And then we've also had engagement with over fifteen boards, commissions, and community organizations. So I know a few of you were present for our last meeting, when we had invited the Parks and Rec Commission, the Senior Advisory Board, the Arts Board. Missing a few off the top of my head. Excuse me?
Veterans were here too, wasn't it?
The library board was here, but Mrs. Tebow was here representing the veterans as well. And then we've also individually have, during our tenure, has also reached out to the police and fire departments, Conservation Commission, we've talked to the Planning Board. I have my whole list of the different boards that we've actually, that we spoke out with. Let's see, Conservation Commission, the EDC, the Parks and Rec Planning Board, Public Art Advisory, Public Safety, Senior Citizens. We've, you know, chatted with the school committee, police department, fire department, so we've have been, as I've said during the open forum, it's been our job to keep our ears open and listen to the needs and the wants of the town residents as we move forward. And that's what really shaped our recommendations coming, moving forward to going into a multi-use community center. So again, we talked about that we recommended concept number five. These are the wetlands and their buffers, so you'll, it's kind of hard to see with this light, but there's a lighter blue that is the streams themselves, and then the blue is the buffers that are needed according to DEM regulations. This would be one of the items that we would further understand as we get a Class One survey completed. But this is again, the high-level concept that Weston and Sampson had provided to us that basically has walking trails, activities all throughout the property, and then just has one singular building. What that's going to look like is to be determined in the future. But it brings all of the amenities in, under one roof, so that condenses the need for multiple mechanical systems, multiple electrical systems, plumbing, conveying systems such as elevators. So it really focuses on the buildable area and really gives us the opportunity to explore a lot of the outdoor items that we can do in concert with DEM. So then I did want to touch base on the community support. As we discussed, we had a survey that was done, and we had received about four hundred and forty-one responses over the six-week period. So this includes, Mrs. Tebow was very helpful in getting out hard copies to the senior housing groups that's throughout town. But we also had the assistance of the head counselor, Mr. Pepin, over at the high school, who distributed this survey amongst the high school students as well. So I know there's been some question of whether or not one survey represents one person or one household. It's kind of a mix of both. So, you know, the four hundred and forty-one is certainly not just four hundred and forty-one people in town. But I, we also wanted to show the distribution of how many respondents we had throughout town. And it shows that, you know, it wasn't congregated in just one specific area. We heard basically from all four corners of town, the concerns, the needs, the wants, and those who participated in the survey. And as it says, you know, we heard forty-one percent of the respondents would like to have a senior center, that was loud and clear. But then there was the additional forty-seven percent of the respondents that would like to have an age-inclusive community space. And then it was one of those questions that we asked, and they just made sure that they heard, that we heard, that they don't want the property to go untouched or underutilized. We have been in possession of this property since 2019, and other than the community garden that has taken place down there, there hasn't been much activity. I do know that there are residents that use it as walking trails for their dogs. I'm so thrilled that the community garden has taken off the way it has in the past two years, that that brought a level of excitement and brought that area's attend, to some other people's attention. And it has helped in some community policing as well. So I think the, I'd have to check with Chief Lafferty, but I think that there has been a, with the community garden, there's been that community watch down there, too. So, you know, these are all the puzzle pieces that we've heard from residents through the survey, through the charrette, through further conversations. These are really a laundry list of things that could be included into a community center that we'd be looking to explore further. When we had our meeting with the library, the seniors, the Parks and Rec, the Arts, and Conservation Commission, there was a lot of overlap of these, just those four groups. Parks and Rec wanted to continue doing the community garden, and was talking about canning and cooking the food that gets grown at the community garden. The library was talking about doing cooking classes. The library was talking about doing cooking classes. And then the seniors were talking about doing cooking and also holding catered events. So something like the night out on the town that we, that the Heritage Association does with Goodwins for the night out, that could certainly be encompassing of all those, three of those groups just right off the bat. And I think it opened our eyes certainly to how much overlap all of these groups in town actually have. We, they've kind of been in some silos. So just understanding the overlap, the shared use of spaces, the activities that they're all planning to do, there is a lot of work that we can do collaboratively to move that along. So in taking all of these items here, you know, that's obviously needs to be fit somehow into a master, property master plan. So that includes all the outdoor activities. That includes the building program spaces and what have you. But the thing about the master plan is, I want to make sure I define this really clearly, is that with the master plan, it identifies short-term and long-term goals. So if we need to phase things, as we show here, we can focus on, you know, the low-hanging fruit in the first phase, whether that be outdoor activities or clearing a certain area out to make sure that we put in proper infrastructure for something that's coming down the road. So really, that's part of the master planning process, is going through, working with council, working with all these other groups to understand, okay, what's going to be our priorities now? And how are we going to phase that if we do in fact go with phasing? So again, this master plan isn't just for, you know, the five, 10 years. It's for the immediate use too, that one, two, year one and year two. What are we going to do down there? Clearly, you know, step one is the removal of the buildings. But then after that, we have a clean slate to start working with. So again, we just wanted to end on the, on our recommendation to move forward. We have put in a lot of work for this report. So we're certainly here to answer any questions about the report. At the end, you will find that there is the RFQ that the group has put together and would recommend that that is the RFQ that gets put forth. If there are other components that you want to see added to the scope of work, we are certainly happy to add those in. You know, being an architect in the business every day, I understand the scope of what's required for these master plans. So I wanted to make sure that we tailored this RFQ that we're presenting to you tonight, that that would really be tailored to the town of North Smithfield and be tailored for what we wanted to move forward with. So with that, most of my committee is here. And we're certainly happy to answer any questions about the report and, you know, listen to any comments that you may have, that you may have. Anyone have any questions?
How about a comment? Thank you. Thank you in the committee for all your endeavors. Well-qualified. The variance in people working together has enriched everything that you're putting forth. So now, I hope we can get started on the steps you take, the baby steps before getting into the big things. But I thank you, and featuring you, the committee that worked on the police station, it has impressed many people. It's your time, your effort, and you're doing it because you care. And that makes a difference. Thank you.
Do we have a timeline on the demolition?
That's out of our jurisdiction. We made the recommendation to council to tear down the buildings back in, back in December. So that has now been passed on. That's been our recommendation since then. And we are just waiting to hear what the action from the council has been.
You will be hearing.
I think I said the fall, right, Mrs. Zlinski?
Yeah, I can, the director is here. Well, you know, I'll play that director, or you can. Well, let me preface this by saying the director's taken a public safety approach to this. He had the gas shut off to the buildings because it was, public safety should have it in live gas. That's the first thing that he did. Now, there's 385,590, this cost 385,600 dollars we made to stop the abatement program. Now, I don't know. Maybe it is, we don't know.
Well, I was going to say, we don't know that.
We don't know. Maybe it is. So I'm going to let the director talk about, because there are timelines. Beginning in April, we had six months to get something going. And I'll let Ray take it from here. He's well-versed in this.
Good evening. As the administrator stated, this isn't one of the fast-paced projects I have. I have many projects that are more important than this in the summer. But the RFP for this is a unique RFP in that, first off, I've never done one. And I've solicited other communities for their input on this. I'm close to putting this RFP out. And I've been advised by people in the business that if you want to get, if you want to get a good price, bid it towards the end of the summer, and hopefully you'll get good prices into the winter, as opposed to demolition in the summertime. So with that, I kind of sat back and I said, I'm going to kind of sit on my heels a little bit, let this thing ride out, yet I knew I had deadlines to meet with RIDOH. I actually spoke to them two days ago. And seeing that we have been initially given the green light, they understand municipality funding, delays, and so on. And I was quite honest with the gentleman who's really the person in charge of it with DOH. And he said, listen, by the time you put this RFP together, go out to bid, get the bids back in, go through the bids, and make a recommendation to the town council, I'm going to be over the six-month deadline, which I believe is in October, October 7th. So I said, well, what's my alternative? And he says, you just asked for an extension. He says, your first extension will take you to the date of the letter that was first submitted, which is back in April. So that would give me time to get to April. But I don't want to do that. I think that in order for the project to keep moving at whatever pace we want to do, I'm pretty comfortable that this RFP will be completed in the next couple of weeks, and then we'll start the process. Now, whether we get, as the administrator has alluded to, the right numbers, that's another thing. What I'm going to do is I'm going to, almost like some of my road projects, I'm going to put the RFP out several ways. I'm going to put it as a total. And then I'm also going to break it down as the asbestos removal and demolition. And see, if we can play with those numbers, maybe get the asbestos abatement done, and then maybe come back in the spring and get the demolition. Or it may come after July 1st, if we don't have enough money, and we ask for more money in the next budget. As Councilor Vanney said, these are all questions I can't answer yet, and I don't know the answer to these questions. But I felt comfortable after the phone call that, seeing that we're not going to hit the October 7th mark, once we put in an extension, we'll be granted that, basically not even a question asked, and it'll give us some more time to get this completed for the fall and hopefully the winter, and see where we stand financially.
Mr. Penegas. Bidding it like that, I think, is a smart move. Like, abatement, demo, or combination. The combination, I think, is going to get you your best price.
That's what I think.
Based on my experience.
And that's what I'm hoping.
Mr. Penegas, I would just be concerned that, I understand we're pushing this out, totally understand that, that there may be winter conditions involved with demolition, so that might bring the cost up a little bit more rather than doing it in the fall or the spring. That would be my only concern with that.
And that also was a question that I said, if we get these numbers, let's go with the assumption that we're not going to have the money to do maybe the total project. Well, we're not going to be talking this fall or the spring. We're going to be talking next year, until we get more money. I mean, it's great to go out to bid, and everyone's like, hey, we're all excited. We just bid it, and the project came in $300,000 over what we have. So we're back to the drawing board.
And Mr. Penegas, correct me if I'm wrong. The folks that did do the asbestos testing also gave us an estimate, construction estimate for the removal. And I believe that was at 287. 287,000.
I think it was, yeah.
So we do have an estimate of what that will cost for the abatement itself.
Only abatement.
Yes, only abatement.
Right.
So that, we do have some gauge of budgetary numbers to work off of.
Right. And I think the demolition is going to be a bigger number. It's the quotes that we've heard in the past for the buildings. We can sit here and talk about this all night. We just need to keep moving forward and get the real numbers. And I think, based on what some of the people in this industry are telling me, put it out in September, October, and you might get a better bid, bid number. Maybe not. I mean, I got to be honest with you, I'm bidding projects now, and all the numbers for everything are sky-high. It's just not, it's just not a good time right now. But we're going to do it, we're going to move forward.
If I may elaborate, the director did say this months ago, that we should wait until September, October to get a better question. So it's not only going to be, it was planned to go off a little bit.
Yeah, probably shouldn't have said I dragged my feet. That's probably not the right term to use, but.
I know, we know what you mean. But it's my concern. Whatever, we've got to go out, get the lowest price, 100%, that's important. But we have to, we can't just wait and say, oh, we don't have the money this month. Even if we've got to tap into our reserves, we will be, the money that we spend on knocking those buildings down will be minuscule compared to what we would face in a lawsuit if somebody got hurt in those buildings. So we get the numbers and we go with it. Even if we've got to tap into our reserves, we've got to get those buildings down because it's a lawsuit waiting to happen.
And you're right, you're exactly right. And a recommendation, we haven't even had a formal recommendation from the trust, our insurer on this, but that came out several years ago, that that whole facility should be fenced off. And we haven't done that. So we're already opened up. For, I mean, we're letting people go down there. That's against every rule in my book right now. Like, it's wonderful to let the people go down there and do a garden and this and that, but we're a lawsuit waiting to happen on this. So I agree that we have to knock these buildings down.
Even if we've got to tap into our reserves to get this done, I think that's, we get it done.
I think, if I remember correctly, the council was fairly unanimous in saying, job number one, get the buildings gone.
Right. I mean, it's amazing that there's not kids potty-ing down there, really.
That was the discussion in April that we had, that before we even go forward with anything else, we've got to get those buildings down because we don't even know what the funding source is. Before we start spending more money, we need to take care of that. So my hope is that you get it out on the street in a couple of weeks. Put it out on the street, we get pricing.
And then we'll know.
In the middle of October, and then we have an idea of what we need to do.
Absolutely. Because I, I mean, I floated the idea that if this thing goes into next year, I'm putting a gate at the bottom of the hill. There's a lot of stuff going on down there. I'll leave it at that. So, so I think we're pretty close. And I'm hoping to get this to the council shortly.
Thanks, I appreciate your work on this. Anybody else have any questions or comments?
The other comment that I make is, I read your report. And you reference numbers with NASDAQ, with projections for students in the school and whatnot. And this is the capacity of our buildings. And people think like that's the magic number, is the capacity, as long as we stay under that number. The reality is, it's not the total number, it's where those numbers lie. Where, and we'll use, I'll use the elementary school as an example. Right now, we're using every classroom in that elementary school. It's almost at capacity. So if you have an influx of 30 kids in the right class grouping, you don't have any more space. And that's been my concern going forward on this thing, that eventually, and in that timeframe that you're showing, this town will be looking to build a new school. Because there are too many things out there waiting to happen that they're just sitting back. Andrews Mill is one of them. 265 housing units that One Sock development wants to build. Rankin Estates is another one that's getting ready. And these things are out there. And they're going to come through. And when they come through, we won't have the space in our buildings. Because it's not a matter of, well, we can absorb 200 kids. It's where those kids come into play. And when they come in in one, and they come in into one group, and this happened 25 years ago, maybe? Where you were having kids coming in at the kindergarten level, at 110, at 115 for the year. All of a sudden, one year, 177. The year behind that, 168. I know, because I was on the school committee at that time. And two of those kids were mine. So it happens that it comes in cycles, that it gets pushed. And when you don't have that space because you're running too full in your buildings, then what do you do? And it's not a matter of, well, we'll take the eighth grade and put them at the high school, and bring the fifth grade or the fourth grade and put it. You can't, education doesn't work like that. And I think we all know that. And that's my concern, is that we're not addressing, to me, the elephant in the room is, you're going to have to build a new school in this timeframe. And that's the only piece of land that the town owns to put a school on. As well as the other issues that you looked on, a community center, a library, and some of these other things, and then some of the wish lists that people would like to see, an ice rink, and some of these other things. And that's my concern, is like, we need to have a plan. And I know that's what you're looking to do as a master plan, but we don't even know what we want them to look and see to put on that site yet. And that's my concern going forward. And I've addressed that numerous times, and I still love that. It's not that I don't want, the first comment that I made way back in March, before the pandemic hit, when we said to people, and you were there, Tony, there were no bad questions, there's no bad ideas. And I stood up and I said, and Gary Zowsky said that. And I said, no, there's only one thing that's off the table. We're not selling this property. The property is not for sale, don't even think about it. And I said that from day one. And so it's a valuable piece of property in this town. And so we need to really look and see what we're going to do on that property, short-term, long-term. Can't put something in that in 10 years we're going to have to move because we need it for something else.
And, you know, that could be easily addressed during the master planning process as well. That can, that, I hear the concern. But we can certainly have the architect and engineering firm that does the master plan take that into consideration and say, okay, let's look at the numbers, let's look at the, you know, the school planning and everything. Maybe there's going to be an area on this site that we need to keep set aside for when that time comes for a new school. And that could be the 10, 15, 25-year plan that, okay, once we hit, you know, once Andrews Mill, Rankin Estate, if and when they perhaps go through, if they don't, then, you know, we'll still have planned for it. And the nice thing about the master plan, I'm doing one of these myself right now, is that one company that I'm working with, they have a master plan already. They've had some change in leadership, they've had some change in their board. And they understand that now they need to kind of pivot a little bit from where their original master plan was. So just because we have a master plan set, it's giving us a clear path forward, but there's adjustments that we can make along the way as well. So once we go through this RFQ process and do the master plan, that's not it. It's like the town's comprehensive plan. It's always going to be evolving, because this is a 25-year project right now. So that's one of those things that we're always going to be looking for and looking at, things like this, is how the town is going to be evolving over time. So then that way, we're providing a service that will be amenable to the town from day one, when it opens up, if and when we get to the building, to, you know, year 25, year 30. We want to make sure that this is a lasting thing, that that's an investment in the town.
And that's a good point that you make, that you go through leadership changes. And especially, this is not a private equity company that's doing, it's not a developer. It's municipal government. And it changes, leadership changes. We did a master plan on the schools in 2006. It's 2022 now. And they're starting to implement Phase 3 without doing Phase 2 because things that, like you say, it's a fluid thing, it's a dynamic piece. And it's constantly changing and being looked at. And so that's the same thing with this. Things are going to change. People are going to change, and what the town needs are going to change, and what the requirements are going to change.
And by the time this is done, I'm going to be retired. So I'm going to be looking for a senior center.
By that time, you'll be around to see it. I don't think I'll be here.
Jeff, I'm, I'm sorry. So you're saying that a master plan then can be flexible enough to show that the immediate future, we figure out what we're going to do with the open space? Because right now, the immediate future does not include a building. But, and I, I just want to make it clear that that doesn't diminish the mission of your committee. It actually makes it even more complicated and more important to figure out what we're going to do with the space. So the short-term plan would be open space, what to do with it. And then the long-term plan could be a building, and then you could also be flexible enough to, for, if we eventually need that location for a school as well, that could all be figured into that master plan?
Exactly. And we can, we can, you know, like, like we've been working with Parks and Rec, with the Library Board of Trustees, if there is some sort of shortfall that they're seeing right now, if there's activities and things that they want to provide for the, the community, we can work with them to make sure that that, in the short term, can be applied for. So Parks and Rec, community garden, outdoor activities, what have you down in the open space. But then, you know, I do libraries every, I've been doing them for more than I care to admit that I've been doing them. But I recognize that we had in 2007, the library failed. And based on library standards, the size of the library that we have for this population of our town is woefully undersized. So it's also identifying things like that, too. So I understand our committee is solely focused on the Hallwell property. We would have to address, you know, what happens to the library, existing library building, that sort of thing, but that can be all part of a discussion as we move forward, too.
Tony, please.
So I was, I was at that, I was at that meeting, March of 19?
2020.
And... March of, yeah, got it, thank you. I was at that meeting, March of 19, and three and a half years later, and a year and a half into what we've been working on as a group, Hallview Committee, I got to tell you, we still don't know exactly what we have there. We have a pretty valuable asset, I believe, to the town of North Smithfield, but precisely what we have, we don't really know. We know we've got a bunch of buildings that we feel, or we determined need to come down, they haven't come down yet. But we, I, I, I don't know if I'm fond of the, the specific term master plan. We have a comp plan here in town. Is that followed all the time precisely? Absolutely not. You know, that's why you have individual groups of people who get together on committees and help determine what directions we should be going in. So it's a guideline. And I think a master plan is a guideline at the same time, and it should have some flexibility. So Paul, when you bring up, you know, the needs for a potential school down the road, yeah, we should be looking at that. You're absolutely right. We need to have contingency plan for where this town is going in the years to come. I know what we do need, we need to find out exactly what we have. And if taking those buildings down and performing a class one survey, so we know exactly the delineation of the wetlands, Mr. Van House spoke to, you know, that maybe there's not a lot of wetlands there, we don't know. Until we have a class one survey done, and that's presented to DEM so they can rule on it and tell us exactly what the potential is for it, it's still an unknown. We need to find out what we've got, and we need to find out what we could do. Now, I think maybe the dynamic has changed a little bit with the potential grant for a senior center over at Scouters Hall, and that's got to be determined. But let's find out what we have and where we can go. And if that means approving a master plan, then I think that's what you should do. If it means approving a class A survey and taking it in steps, we need to show some progress, we need to move this forward. So that's what I'm asking you to do. You know, we've got a pretty successful summer camp here in town, Camp Phoenix. As far as I'm concerned, it, Mr. Tech and his crew do a great job without many resources. It's not an elementary school. Let's think about potentially, could we have a space there? Maybe going forward, community space, school, summer camp? You know, there's so many possibilities, and that's exactly how we should be looking at it. But to not, it's up on, on one of Jeff's slides, to not do anything any longer, it's just not acceptable. Thanks.
People, people should know, Jeff, that the master plan, this is not a month, one month, two month thing. This is a year to year and a half to actually get a real good master plan done.
Oh, yeah. So, you know, typically, I have worked on master plans that can last anywhere from six to eight months, and those are what I think are really good ones. So there are not going to be any shovels in the ground within the next year. This is only, with the master plan, we can also request cost estimates to identify a budgetary range of what can happen with each of those phases. So if we're focusing on open space, we can have that estimated out, include escalation. I can happily say that our escalation is a little bit easier to nail down with the estimators that we have been working with in the past couple, the best month or so. So that, that's always promising to see, that things are starting to level out. And in addition with the master plan comes costs. So we'll be able to, I say, okay, well, you know, in, you know, 2030, we may, and this is an arbitrary date, so don't hold me to anything, we may need to go out for a bond because we've got, received a grant that's doing matching funds, but we need to go for the full amount, but we're going to get half of it back. And it's going to be X millions of dollars to go forward with. But we'll have that number to start to plan for as we move forward. Hopefully, there won't be another global pandemic that will throw things out of, completely out of whack. But that, that's another thing that comes with the master plan, is costs. And a lot of the time, this group has been dealing with a lot of variables, and we don't have the expertise to put numbers to things right off the bat. Because we haven't narrowed down where we, exactly we're going to go. Because we still need to go through this process, still, if you look at the RFQ, I call for three public charrettes for folks to come in and tend to, in addition to helping us do more online surveys to get that input. So there's, there's still a lot of legwork to be done at this point.
Anybody else? I'm comfortable supporting the master plan. I just want to make sure that there is that short, that we can see, we can do something with the property in the short term. Open space, paths, maybe a rink, water, a jump, you know, the splash pad. Because the 101 socket, have you ever seen all the people down on 101 socket? It's crazy. They're very popular. Just things like that. And then if you need a school, even if you put that where the school potentially would go for five, six, seven, eight years, and then if we need a school, then, you know. So if, 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 if there's a short-term plan to do something sooner than later, instead of just leaving it empty, then I would support that.
Yeah. I think once we get moving with the master plan, and we do get this design team onboard, we can work concurrently. The master plan doesn't have to be fully completed to start looking at phase one items. If, if we're talking about pathways and putting in infrastructure to help open space, you know, clearly, we're going to need to do some repaving to get some level ground out there for an ice rink. So there's, there's the ability to say, okay, we're going to focus on our, we'll have our meetings, we'll have our collaboration, let's focus on the short-term goals right now, and then let's get that cost estimated, we can start to explore that. And, you know, if that needs to go out to another RFQ, or if we'll contract with the same team to do something similar, to kind of work in conjunction, we can certainly get that moving pretty easily.
I mean, we could be so happy with the short-term plan, with the open space, using the open space, that we decide that we're going to keep it just the way it is.
You very well could be.
Anybody else?
So I think the two action items that we are looking for tonight is, one, acceptance of our report by the council, and then the, the second action item would be to have us work in conjunction with either the finance director, or Ray, or the administrator to finalize this, the proposed RFQ that's in your report, and move that forward. I would say that a, a good amount of time to give firms to review and reply to this would probably be about a month, month and a half. I know that brings you right up on, on middle of, middle to end of October. So that would probably be about the timeframe we'd be looking to continue to move. And at that point, we did include a scoring evaluation within the RFQ. The, the board would go through, score that, interview the, probably the top three, three firms, and once we come to a conclusion on which firm might best serve North Smithfield, we would make, ultimately make that as a recommendation to, to the town council. Unless there was another process, if we wanted to have a joint meeting for an interview, we can certainly do that. It would kind of be up to your prerogative if, if that would be your, your choice, but I was looking at the, what the MBRTF has gone, process has gone through for bringing on Tecton. So I figured that was a good, that worked out to be a good process, so follow, follow in those footsteps. And Mr. Vatney, you can correct me if I'm incorrect in assuming that that was the process he went through.
Went out through the town, and then when they came in, they were evaluated by two members of the task force, and the administrator, and the finance director, I believe. And then their recommendations came to the whole board, we reviewed their, their paperwork, and then we made a recommendation. And it was a good one, I think. Speaking for myself.
So I need to go?
Yeah, please. Well, if you could, because people on YouTube would be able to hear it better.
Yes, voice travels.
It does.
Yeah, it can usually get way.
It does.
Is this, is this still on, Carl? Yeah. I think we just need to qualify after exhaustive meetings on our account. All we're asking for is the only and next logical step, which is a request for proposal. You're not spending a penny. You're allowing us to go and solicit proposals that we would then qualify under whatever criteria is, is required, to present to you for then the ultimate decision, do we move forward and actually spend money? And we kind of backed ourselves into this. There is frankly, nothing more, in my opinion, as a member, that this committee can do if you say no tonight.
Right.
Then whether you reappoint us, don't reappoint us, there's nothing viable left for us to do. We've exhausted everything. And there's no intelligent conversation without this professional input, which you all know. So really, to not complicate it, we're just saying, give us the right, the authority, to get the engineering firms to give us a cost. Because until we know the cost to even design anything, we can't even seriously talk about the viability of it because we have no idea. So I urge you to do that. We've set the expectation in the community that we are going to do something. And if we stop now, then you can't help but expect that the community will have a deep exhale and say, again, you know, how many times are we going to be told you're going to do something, and then you don't? And from a positive point of view, if we think that the sky is partially falling or fully falling, to be facetious from an economic point of view, Jeff can verify, that the first ones to usually get hit by that tsunami are on the design side of new projects. So it stands to reason that we may find ourselves benefiting from the fact that the uncertainty will lower the cost of the design, which is a win for all of us. So I would urge you to give us that authority, so then we can come back and give you a presentation. And then we'll take as many baby steps or big steps as everything presents itself to you as the leaders of the town. You're going to guide us, but at least we have the tools to get us where we want to go. Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody have any more questions or comments?
I'm with you.
Yeah, so the first motion I'm looking for is to accept the report, the Haller, from the Haller Review Committee, dated August 2022.
Mr. President.
Ms. Alice.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the report submitted by the Hallwell, Hallwell Review Committee dated September 2022.
Second.
That's a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. And then the next thing we're looking for is a discussion by council vote on the action and vote on the Haller Review Committee recommendation to move forward with RFQ for master planning.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the recommendation by the Haller Review Committee to move forward with the RFQ for master planning.
Second motion.
That's the second by Ms. O'Hara. Any discussion or comments or questions?
Just so, just so the discussion, everyone is clear, it's an RFQ, it has to be by state law. Choosing someone on qualifications, not on a dollar amount, that comes at a later date. First, you've got to qualify him, then you can get proposals from the qualified firms. Just so everyone is clear on that.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. Anything else? Roll call, Joanne?
Yes.
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 On behalf of the committee, thank you all very much for this. We've been looking forward to moving forward for quite some time, so thank you all very much.
And I thank you for your patience.
Yeah, I know sometimes it seems like it's going slow and that, but we really appreciate all the service from everybody, and it, it means a lot that you guys are putting in all this work.
I just want to add one thing. I mean, honestly, having, having nine committee members that have very unique mindsets, I mean, Bob, you're extremely analytical. Tony, you have a very, you're very opinionated.
No.
Okay. Bob, you're like the grandfather of North Smithfield. And obviously, with Jeff's leadership, and can't leave out Lori from a female perspective. But having nine, nine different people, you would think that there'd be too many hands in the cookie jar, but it actually has been a joy, you know, working on the committee, and it's nice to know that we're not a standstill.
And I would echo those same sentiments.
Thank you. So if there's nothing else, I want to entertain a motion to adjourn, then you can adjourn your, your committee.
Sure thing.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
No, I typically do this for my committee. Is there anything that we haven't talked about that you guys want to talk about tonight? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn then. All right, we have a motion for Mr. Mount, do you have a second? Second from Ms. Stradier, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we are closed out, thank you.